...one point one two acres of property at a price of three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Do you want me to read all three?
We'll do all three as one motion.
Okay. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Remetta, that council authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement of purchase and sale between the Corporation of the City of Cambridge and Cryell Holdings Limited, or to whom it may direct, for three point two six acres of property at a price of one million twenty-six thousand and nine hundred dollars. And the third motion, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Adshade, that council authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement of purchase and sale between the Corporation of the City of Cambridge and Complete Group Incorporated for one point three one acres of property at a price of three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Folks, any comments? I'm going to call the question, those in favor. Okay, it's Kerry, thank you. I'm going to do, I got one delegation, we have five presentations tonight, and we have ten delegations, so I'm going to do the one delegation first. That will be Jennifer Dudo, it's the Cambridge Hawks hockey team, and they're here to talk about a donation to the Highway of Heroes tribute, please. We'll do that story about that.
Good evening Mayor Craig, members of city council and residents. When a member of Canada's armed forces falls in combat, his or her final journey is along the Highway of Heroes from CFB Trenton to the coroner's office in Toronto. As the Director of Marketing for the Cambridge Minor Hockey Association, it is my great honour to be here tonight to facilitate the presentation of a certificate for two trees planted along the Highway of Heroes in the name of all of Cambridge's fallen soldiers. The hard work and dedication that these players put forward to raise awareness and funds for the Highway of Heroes is commendable. This is the second season that head coach Gabe Dudo challenged his novice Hawks team at the beginning of their respective seasons to learn about Cambridge's fallen soldiers and to fundraise to support our active and retired military personnel. Players earned the special occasion camo jersey by fundraising enough money, as I mentioned, as well as choosing a local poppy street, they had to research it and present a two to three minute presentation after each game. You'd think that getting a room of eight-year-olds to be quiet and hold their attention can be daunting, especially after a game, but the respect for the subject matter itself as well as each other that these kids have would truly warm your hearts as it did mine. As the daughter of a World War II vet myself, this initiative holds a very close place to my heart. These players learnt and understand the monumental sacrifice that has been collectively made by over one hundred and seventeen thousand brave Canadians, and more specifically the stories of local veterans. And with that, I would invite Gabe Dudo and the chosen representatives from the novice Hawks team to come up and present the framed certificate and commemorative coins that represent the financial donation that these players raised and donated to the Highway of Heroes in the name of all fallen soldiers of Cambridge, Ontario, lest we forget.
Got everybody up here? Anyways, I just want to thank all of you. You know, this is great, and you're coming into a council chamber where we've had a number of veterans over the years actually sit at the council table. And what they have done in their past lives, and what they did is they served their country and they served their community. And for you to do something like this really strikes home to me as mayor, and I think on behalf of all the people of Cambridge. You know, we're very, very thankful for the efforts that you've made and for the fact that you have a new understanding of what this is all about. So I want to thank you on behalf of council, and I want to thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Cambridge, done a great job, okay? Can't take it home.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
That's great. Going to declare a two-minute recess, folks, okay? Let the kids. Okay, folks, we'll get back into the order of things tonight. First thing I want to do for members of council is any disclosures of peculiary interest, members of city council. All right, seeing none, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, we've got a bit of a lopsided arena here the way it looks here, but anyways, you can spread out if you wish. I'm going to ask you to stand, please, for, we're going to sing the National Anthem. Thank you very much. All right, dealing with our first presentation, Helen Kelly, please, CEO of the ID Exchange and its annual report. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and members of the public. This is our annual report from 2017, and we have a lot of really exciting outcomes to talk about this evening. Some of our highlights include over eight hundred and eighteen in-person visits, three hundred and eighty-six active volunteers that joined us for almost ten thousand volunteer hours. Certainly, services to children and families is one of our service pillars, and we were really excited to win second place in the National TD Children's Summer Reading Club Library Awards out of over just over one hundred and fifty submissions across Canada. We also had a look back at the last three years, and over the last three years, we have achieved a twenty percent increase in total weekly hours of operation across our locations, thirty-seven percent increase in Wi-Fi usage, and an amazing thirty-one percent increase in program attendance. This really is one of our strategic objectives, to have lots of hands-on activities, STEM learning and programs in our spaces, and the community has really responded to this direction. Of course, we love the comments that people give us, and in partnership with the numbers, we look at the comments that they send us. This was my favorite one from this year. My son learned to read when he was two and a half years old, and I give all the credit to our visits to the library. This is our favorite place to be. We want our community to expect more from us, and 2017 was the year of more. We are pleased to have councillor Mann and councillor Reed join us when we opened up our seed library at our Preston location. As you may know, we have a community garden there, and the seed library is a complement to that, with over twelve hundred seed packages borrowed in the first year, people coming from as far away as Alora because they heard that we had a seed exchange where they could leave their seeds or they could pick up seeds. We're doing more with our garden this year. Next month, we're going to install an accessible door, ramp, and walkway through a federal enabling accessibility fund grant so that everyone can be welcome in that space, no matter what their mobility issues are. And we were lucky in 2017 to receive a Waterloo Region Healthy Kids Community Challenge Fund Grant. You can see pictured there at planting day, we've got children using the new child-sized garden implements that we bought as a result of that grant. We're doing a lot more at Clements Mill, through the heart of the community project. You'll see when you go outdoors there, they're welcoming the community onto that space. So there's a climbing wall, a playground, you can walk on the track, you can play on the basketball court. The whole community is welcomed onto the St. Benedict's property, and when you're in the library, we now have an active living collection. So if you didn't bring your basketball, you can borrow one from us. And if you didn't bring your baseball, you can also borrow one, or if you'd just like to borrow a yoga mat and have a really zen time at the library, you can do that at Clements Mill as well. We know that that is a very diverse community, and we added a settlement worker to that location this year. And in partnership with the Y, we have a settlement worker who can help newcomers settle in our community, whether they need to get connected to housing, or programs, or services, this is the place that they can come to and find out how to get connected. At Hespler, we just have a growing community all the time with young families, so we've tried to use our spaces in different ways from the way they were imagined when we renovated ten years ago. On the left, you can see that's the space between the heritage wall and the glass addition, we're now using that corridor as a space for active learning. And up on the second floor, where you see the tables that are pictured, someone is using a makey-makey piano, which means he's playing those bananas with their connectivity to make music. What a difference it makes when you put your stacks on casters. So on the first floor, in the children's area, we put all of our stacks on casters, push them out of the way, we have this great big room, and on family day, we get to fill it with families. So we really feel this is a flexible use of that space, we're imagining it in ways that it actually wasn't designed. This is my favorite photo of 2017. This was Harry Potter Day at Hespler on a Saturday in July. Again, this is a different space, usually that's the reading lounge, it's filled with families, but you cannot sneak up on an owl because he sees that photographer coming. At Queen Square, we have more community engagement in our art galleries with the Imaginative Film Festival and our taco stand with active programming. We held a barbecue on Galt Love, July 7th, in conjunction with our art exhibition opening, and had a neighborhood soup day in December at Design at Riverside where we really talked about food sustainability. We were so excited to compete the Legacy Project film, which really connected seniors and youth in our community and had tremendous community impact. And at Queen Square, you'll find us exploring new technologies with 3D printers, and pictured on the right, that's a squishy circuit, so part of STEM programming where you see the connectivity and the electricity that you can use with plasticine to literally have a light bulb go off. And why are we doing things like that? Because pretty soon, we will be where the past and the future intersect. We have tremendous community support for the new location at the old post office. Thanks to Monogram Coffee Roasters, over fifty-six hundred dollars has been raised for materials in the Children's Discovery Centre, thanks to the sale of the classic roof tiles off of the building. They are going, going very soon with all of those sold at twenty dollars apiece. If you haven't got your classic roof tile, go get your slate roof tile from Monica and Graham. We were pleased to have a donation of fifty thousand dollars from Toyota, which we are using for our laser cutter and other items in our maker space that were always on our wish list, but now we can afford them. Thomas Taylor was a fifth-generation resident in Cambridge, and as a young person, he spent hours reading at the old Galt Public Library on Water Street. He left us a bequest in 2013, and we are so pleased, after speaking with his family, to use a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase materials for teens and children at the digital library, so that we can honor his memory and support youth in our community at the new digital library, just as he spent hours at the old Galt Library on Water Street. And the Parks Canada Heritage Grant that was secured by the city is making the building shine. You can see pictured on the left, the restoration of the chimney, which is going to be the entrance to the third-floor maker space. Pictured in the middle is work that's ongoing on the spectacular reading room on the first floor, and don't worry, there are new slate tiles to replace the ones that you can fundraise for. Thanks to the Parks Canada Heritage Grant, we were able to restore the beautiful clock and bell. You can see in the studio there, the clock is being examined, then it's ready to be placed on the building, and in the right photo, you see the beautiful masonry work that has been restored thanks to the grant. This is going to be a place to relax, recharge, and get back to the river. There will be tech programs, including how to build an A-line robot, or find out how to publish your ebook, and we'll be connecting learners of all ages, we've already started that. Half of our volunteers are teens, and they tell us they really want to volunteer with technology, so we've already started pairing them with seniors. We feel we're connected to community. Libraries are homes away from home, they advance the urban agenda, and are catalysts for downtown revitalization. Libraries transform, they transform individuals, families, and communities. We are uniquely positioned to bridge the digital divide so everyone can reach his or her potential. So whether you want to come, grab a cup of coffee and enjoy the Wi-Fi, look at the river, or view the beautiful architecture, we can't wait to welcome you. We're going to see you this summer at the old post office, come in and high-five a robot, or find out how to use virtual reality, because we can't wait to see you there in three short months. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Members of council, questions, please. Councillor Wolf.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a big thank you, Helen. The leadership you've shown the library has been outstanding. You have an amazing, energetic, enthusiastic staff, and they have done so much for our community, and our libraries are certainly a great asset to the city. So my question is, when is opening day for the old post office?
Well, as you know, we are speeding through construction right now, councillor Wolf, and getting all of the details in place. So we are looking at opening in three months, so it will be mid to late June, and I would think that within thirty days, we'll have a specific date. We're wrapping up those details right now.
Any other questions, members of council? I just have one on the, on the St. Benedict's, the library at St. Benedict's. Now, that's being expanded, am I correct, or being redone? Did I get that wrong?
No, you did not get that wrong, Mr. Mayor. You're correct. It is going to be renovated through the generosity of a Hallman Foundation grant, through the Lyle S. Hallman Foundation. That was a successful application for a half-million-dollar renovation, and they're working right now, the tender has gone out, we're just waiting for the tender details to come back, and if all goes well, we will be renovating this summer.
Good, thank you very much. And thank you very much for the presentation, and always, it's great to have you here. And you know what's interesting? We did a survey a few years ago about all our facilities, sports facilities, senior centers, libraries, and libraries came out on top. Seventy-five percent of the people that surveyed felt that libraries were such an important place in the community. So I think it certainly augurs well for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shannon Noonan, please. This is dealing with, this is the manager of transportation, item six, the continuous improvement update. Jen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Craig, members of council, staff, and members of the audience. In 2014, the city initiated the development of a corporate continuous improvement program supported by a staff-led CI team. As chair of that team, I'm here tonight to provide you with an update on the work that has been happening. So what is continuous improvement? Continuous improvement offers all of us an opportunity to step back and reevaluate how we work and how we can make things better. We want to engage staff at all levels to look critically at how we do business, to improve our level of customer service, and to find efficiencies in the work that we do. Well, while cost-saving can be a byproduct of what we do, it's not necessarily the focus. It's about, the program's really about improving upon the work we do, and improving in big and small ways. So any idea that's brought forward is a good idea. So our team is currently comprised of ten members of staff, we have room for up to fifteen members on the committee. We are currently recruiting new members, and it's comprised of staff from across the corporation. The names of the current and past members are included in the staff report in front of you. So to guide the program, a framework using a three-phase approach was developed through the CI team. Phase one was really about building the culture. What we were looking to do in this phase was to identify what and, and why we want to include CI as part of our, well, sorry, what CI is and why we want to include it as part of our corporate culture. We also wanted to brand the program, and we wanted to engage staff into the program, and we wanted to provide some training and education about it. Phase two was, is the idea-building and sharing and moving ideas forward. This is really the stage that we're at now. Phase one is an ongoing, continuous objective. It's, we're always trying to build the culture, and we're always trying to engage staff. For phase two, what we were looking to do here was to roll out the process that was developed by the CI team. We wanted to introduce the tracking and reporting component of the program, and we wanted to establish accountability and committee support for the program. And we also wanted to highlight the ideas and results of the program to the staff. And phase three was really, it's about evaluation, which we haven't really gotten there quite yet. It's a, it's the phase that we're starting to work on now, and we're looking at measuring and qualifying the impacts of the ideas, and potentially developing a recognition program. So the framework, or the, the flow, this flowchart here outlines the process for moving the ideas forward. So at a very high level, what it does, how the process works is that, the intent is that ideas would be shared with, with management or with the continuous improvement team as appropriate. The ideas would be reviewed, and potentially reviewed by the senior management team and the corporate leadership team if required. Communication would go back to staff on the status of the idea, and communication would also go out to staff from the CI team on the implementation and lessons learned. Generally speaking, it's intended that the departmental ideas would be managed internal to the department, so the process identifies ways that managers and supervisors can work with their teams to explore the ideas and track the ideas, and move the idea from just an idea to actual implementation. And then for corporate ideas, these would be ideas that are more related to the overall corporation as opposed to a specific department or division. These ideas are intended to be directed to the continuous improvement team so that that team can help facilitate moving those ideas forward, so the, the staff person who has brought that idea forward can be connected with the right departments and the right staff leads to assist them in moving it forward. So although continuous improvement has been part of our corporate culture since 2014, we really just rolled out the, the staff-led continuous improvement team work in the fall of last year. We held a number of events, including some coffee breaks that were held at City Hall and at satellite facilities. With these events, we actually had over two hundred staff attend these events, and there was a lot of discussion generated at the meetings. Staff were encouraged to follow the, the process, but we did hear a lot of different ideas, a lot of ideas about communication, technology, health and fitness, operations, and the appreciating Cambridge employees program, things like that are what we heard about. We also hosted a kiosk at the all-staff meeting in November where we presented, presented the process and also shared with staff some of the success stories from the work that's already been undertaken, the ideas that have moved forward. And we also held a workshop for the operations management team, and this workshop was intended to inform the operations management team of the process and how they can really work with their teams to, to bring continuous improvement ideas forward. So as of December 2017, at least fifty staff-led ideas have been implemented in every department throughout the corporation. These ideas range in size and scope and include a number of different focus areas, including services, process, and operations. So some of the ideas included civil marriage ceremonies, they're now being conducted in-house. This created, has created some additional revenue for the city, and, and really brings something different to the staff's positions that are dealing with these ceremonies. And speaking with those staff, they've really found that it's added a lot more fun to their, to their job, not that their jobs weren't fun to begin with, but it's added a bit more. Also, there was a special events advisory team that was set up. This increased the communication and collaboration amongst all staff that are involved with special events, so that we could deliver better events throughout the city. Another idea that was brought up forward and implemented was the reusable cup water fill stations. So now at City Hall, we have the water fountains with the, the fill stations for staff and the public to use. So this has really reduced the need for bringing in bottled water, so it, it provided a lot of environmental benefits and has also reduced some of our costs. So continuous improvement, there are a lot of benefits to continuous improvement. It promotes excellence in customer service, both internal and external. We're trying to offer programs and services that are needed, wanted, and are of high quality to the public, so this provides us an opportunity for staff to, to really bring their ideas forward on how we can do that. It encourages collaboration and teamwork and builds stronger teams throughout the corporation. It creates an environment of continuous learning and improving. We all know that change is inevitable, and it's important for us all to embrace it and be part of solutions when we can. It also forms a sustainable and efficient and adaptable organization. We want people to bring their ideas forward, we want, we want to hear from people, we really want to encourage staff to, to provide their input on how we can make things better. We want to generate an ongoing and open dialogue between staff and their managers and supervisors, and we just really want to make Cambridge a better place to work, live, and play. So what's next? The success of the CI in program really hinges upon fostering a culture of change and engagement of staff at all levels. So we're going to continue building the culture, we want to have more communication, some more tracking, we want to check in with the managers perhaps on a regular basis to, to hear about what has been brought forward, and, and really, we just want to, to engage And really, we just want to engage staff and to encourage staff to bring their ideas forward. We want staff to own their ideas and assist in making Cambridge better.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Members of council, questions? Elsa Mann, please.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Thanks for the presentation, Shannon. It's exciting to hear that we have staff who have great ideas to come forward, and I think there's nothing better than allowing staff to come forward with their ideas on how to improve their workplace and how to do things better, and they work the front line. They probably know best how to make those improvements. So I'm really excited to hear this. Are there any recognition or incentive initiatives that we have when people do bring those ideas forward so that we could hear what they come up with and what's been implemented? I think it's so important that we would hear what they've done or what they've suggested and to know what's been implemented.
Through you, your worship. We don't have a formal recognition program at this time. It's something that the continuous improvement team is working on. But what we do at this point in time is we do highlight these success stories, and we do share those stories with all staff so that we can recognize the staff who have brought those ideas forward and so that we can recognize the success of those ideas as well.
That's great. Thanks, Shannon. And I would just encourage the team to continue to work on that because it is so important to recognize the good work that staff do and those ideas that come forward. Thanks.
Okay. Members of council, questions, please. Elsa Reed.
Thank you, your worship, through you, to Shannon. Would it be fair for we to qualify this as a kind of grassroots organizational style rather than a top-down style so that we are recognizing that there are leaders at all levels of the organization and that engaged staff is the kind of staff that we prefer to have and that this is an encouragement for involvement from everybody within the corporation?
Through your worship, yes, that's correct. We are looking at this program from that exact perspective. We want to empower staff, and we want all staff to be leaders in our corporation by bringing their good ideas forward, and we want them to be recognized for those ideas as well. So we want them to own them. Thank you.
Counselor Liggett, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shannon, that was a very easy-to-understand presentation. It was sort of like a felt-of-bouncing ball and being able to do that, so thank you. And to follow up on Counselor Mann, it would be good if council knew who created that stuff as well, so if you could bring that forward to your team to let us know who does that, that would be good. Now, I noticed that this is ideas only. So what do you have in place for someone who doesn't have so much as a positive idea going forward, but they see something that's wrong in the system and they want to bring that to the attention of their management? Is there someplace that they can give that without divulging who they are if it's a criticism? Because some people just don't want to be the face of that. So do we have something in place for people?
Through your worship, we don't necessarily have an anonymous way of providing the ideas, but a staff member can email the CI2 team email address and provide their input there, and we could, from that point, the CI team can help facilitate moving things forward from there, potentially on an anonymous basis.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shannon. Thank you very much, okay, for the presentation. Counselor Devine, you have the recommendation.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mann, continuous improvement update. Let the continuous improvement update be approved.
Comments, members of council? Those in favor? Okay, the recommendation is carried. All right, next presentation is Chris Wetston, please, the manager of water. It's item seven. It's the annual water report and summary.
Good evening, council, Mayor Craig, staff, and citizens. I've put a report together and captured some of the highlights from the 2017 operational season or year that I put together, sorry. Some of the highlights in the report is, one of the things that needs to be touched on is if we've had a system description of if we've had any growth. Just a report, we've had minor system growth of that. We have 583 kilometers of water mains, approximately 40,000 service connections, 3,400 public hydrants, and approximately 5,200 valves, and our system still is divided within five pressure zones. Other report highlights are sampling requirements, how many samples were taken within the system, which is usually calculated by population size. We took approximately 2,300 bacterial samples. Of those, 1,673 were E. coli, Toricole Farm samples specific, 629 were HPC. 832 of those samples were chlorine residual tests to make sure residuals are sufficient within the system, and 344 other required tests. Just a note, of the 3,500, when you add all those numbers together, the 1,600, the 629, 832, of the 3,500 samples, only seven required follow-up sampling and by protocol and procedure, everything it was adhered to. Also, within the report, there's a touch base with financial expenses incurred. These are some of the numbers that I provided. Water connection maintenance, approximately $3.2 million. Water main maintenance, about $1 million. Water main unidirectional flush swabbing contract was approximately $128,000, and hydrant maintenance was around $525,000. The report, the annual report, is available online, the city website, as well through the clerk's office for a hard copy. Every year, the ministry does an inspection. It's a surprise visit. They'll contact myself and give me, usually typically 24 hours to prep and get ready for that. They showed up approximately September 15th and conducted an inspection for the 2017 operating, a year from January 1st until September 15th. What they're looking for are specifics with respect to number of samples taken, making sure we're following procedure, looking at operator training, looking at certification for our operators, and making sure everything's by required code. On that inspection, we received a mark of 100% compliance. Within the highlight as well, it requires me to update council, mayor, staff, and the citizens if there's any legislation updates. There are no significant, just to note, there's no significant changes to any of the listed drinking water regulations, certification regulations, the drinking water quality management system, and the financial plan reg. This graph I've provided to, what it is, is a 10-year capture of water purchased from the region. You can see from 2008 to 2017. And then also, what I, you can see that we're on a downward trend from 2008 to 2017. It's about a 14.1% reduction. Between 2016 and 2017, it was about a 3.4% reduction. Also, what I've noted is, with the red line in the chart, is service connections. Remember, I referenced with system growth, we've, from 2008 to 2017, we've grown by approximately 6,000 connections. So albeit that we're, our city's growing, our demand for water is going down, which is a good thing through conservation, water loss initiatives, et cetera. This is a big topic, water loss. It's one of our key performance indicators of how our system operates. You can still see that we've got some preliminary numbers for, we're conducting an audit right now of water loss audit for the 2017 season. Preliminary numbers are putting us in at about 19.6%. The audit that was conducted last season for 2016 put us at 20.2%. So we're still, we're in the good. We're going down, and we're moving in the right direction. Just a note, 1% reduction in loss is about $196,000. Another popular topic during the winter months in Cambridge and other municipalities is water main breaks. You can see that we're also through water main breaks, so we're on a downward trend. For 2017 season, we only had approximately 17. Reason and rationale behind why our water main breaks are down would be that we have a different way of thinking on capital replacement now, and it's not as if, we don't look, it's just, I think years and years ago, it used to be looked at surface. Everybody looked at the aesthetics for reconstruction. Now we're looking at other variables with respect to how many service breaks are within a segment of pipe, known areas where having issues for capital replacement. Water service failures are in the same downward. You'll see that there's a little bit of a jump, bump back up in 2017 of 190, but we're still, overall, moving in a downward trend. I can remember 14, like I've been within water in Cambridge for about 14 years now, and I remember we had quite a few leaks. It was just ongoing, didn't seem like we were going to catch up. We're coming to a point in time where now we're, there's no leaks on the board to fix, and we're having time to do other preventative maintenance activities, which is a good move, the right direction we want to go to. I can open up for questions right now.
All right. Members of council, Counselor Devine.
Yes, thank you to the chair. Thanks, Chris, for your presentation. We had seven samples. For follow-up, what was the issue with these samples?
Seven, within the seven samples, I believe three were chlorine residuals, insufficient chlorine residuals, which is a very quick remedial action to fix. It just involves flushing a fire hydrant to get those residuals back up to operational standards. The other samples would have been presence/absence. The remaining, I believe it was a boat, four to seven, four samples were presence/absence, and the remedial action, that's a bacterial sample taken, and remedial action on a back T hit would be to measure, resample again the location that was, the sample was taken, then upstream and downstream, and all those samples were cleared.
Do we test our own samples, or do we send them up?
We send them to the region.
Okay. And for 2019, what's the projected water loss for 2019?
Budgeted for 2019, I believe, is 19%. I can get that. Who would you?
I'd like to see it. It'd be nice to get down to 15.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Montero.
Thank you. I think my question is partially answered, but I have a follow-up. Through you, what would be the norm of, the reason I'm asking this is because the water loss, those numbers don't seem to, although they're improving, but they're not fast enough in my, what would be the norm of water loss in a city of our size?
I think--
I know there's always going to be water loss.
Yeah. Through your worship, I believe the national average is approximately 13%. That's what we're aiming for. I'd like to see 10%. I'd like to have, make the system tight. There are allowable leakages, et cetera, but we're moving in the right direction to get those numbers down.
Okay. My other question was answered through--
Okay. Counselor Liggett, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, it may not be fair, it may not be an answer you can give me, but of the piping that's 115 years old, what part of the city is that in, and is that part of our piping or is that the region's?
Through your worship, without me having a map in front of me, I'd have to get back to you. There are some older sections in town, but I can get that information back to you.
Yeah, I'd like to--
It'll be throughout the entire city. It won't be one, just one section.
Oh, okay. Okay. I would assume that that's also the next things that are in our, to be fixed.
Yes.
If you pulled up and fixed, okay, thanks.
All right. Counselor Mann, please. Just a question, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Chris, thanks for the presentation, and I remember last year when we had this presentation, you told us that we would see a reduction in water consumption, so we're glad to see, or water loss, rather, and I'm glad to see that. And so next year, I can look for 10%, can I?
Is that the question, Counselor?
That's my first question, your worship. But that's redundant. My real question is, so the reduction that we've seen, or the loss reduction that we've seen, is that because we're working smarter and finding and detecting and being proactive and looking for these leaks? Can you pinpoint it for me?
Through you, your worship, I think it's a combination of conservation efforts through the citizens. It's us, you'll remember a few, a year or so back, you gave, we requested some of the leak equipment to actually look for those leaks that haven't surfaced. Those are the low-bearing fruit, and we've been quite successful. Leaks that haven't surfaced that we've found, which would possibly still be running to date, is approximately 23. It's those, those are the leaks that, like kind of the low-bearing fruit that we want to try to attack. When we conducted that 20, the audit in 2017, which is a review of 2016's numbers, recommendations came forth, and we're working towards those recommendations, which will also move us in the right direction for water loss. But I think conservation efforts, enabling our own staff to find leaks, and a few other continuous improvement efforts is moving us in the right direction.
Thank you, Chris. We're all glad to see it going in that direction.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks again.
All right. We got one delegation. Sandra Hill, please. Sandra?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and the public. I'm here to talk about the water report, too. I don't remember you, Chris, last time I was here. I usually come to council every time we get the report every year on an annual basis. I mean, it's pretty good, it's better than I've seen it, except for the one condition about the operators still operating and testing our water in the city who aren't certified. That's probably been reported by the MOE four or five times, and I think the last time I came to the city, I reported that, too. Now, I know it says in here that you had a certified officer standing there while it was being sampled, but I think that the report card should be signed by the certified water sampler and not just some worker. The other thing is, yes, we had seven deficiencies in sample, and I don't know what the chlorine residue test is. Now, you explained that it was a fire hydrant testing, so that means maybe we need to do more fire hydrant. I know you did 583 last year, but maybe we need to do more. That's dead-end streets, right? That happens in dead-end streets?
All right, Sandra, would you--
And then the second--
--talk to council, please, okay? Please.
And then the second, well, he's the expert. And then the second thing is the lead. And I was wondering if there's a policy at the city, and I need to direct this to you guys, when there is lead in the city water pipes and it's reported to the residents of Cambridge, how come it's just not advertised in the paper, like we all need to know about it? how come it's just not advertised in the paper, like we all need to know about it? I don't know where that lead contamination was in the city. It says in the report from the MOE that the city did notify the residents, but I don't know who those residents were, maybe it was my street and I didn't get notified. So I don't think that's fair to all of us. If there's lead in our water, we need to, and it has to be notified to the residents, then I think we all, the whole community, should be notified about it. And otherwise, I am happy that the reduction in the water mains is going down. There's, the only concern I have in the report, that we have pipes that are 115 years old. That's way too old. And then I see that there's going to be a better treatment plant for the West Galt section, which sounds like a good plan too. But the 115-year-old pipes, we really got to sit down and measure that on our budget instead of passing other things at budget time, fix our water pipes, right? But I would like you to ask about a policy, and maybe one of yous can come back to me on it, if there is a policy out there, if there is lead or any ECOI in our water, that it is publicly, the public is informed about it. Okay?
Okay, are you finished? Thank you. I have one question, Councilor Liggitt, please.
It's, it's more a question for staff than of the delegation.
Sure.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Sandra, okay. Councilor Liggitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on what Sandra has stated about the lead, I want to be assured, and I thought it was not lead pipes that we own, but more of the connection and lead on the property owner's pipes. So if that's wrong, I'd like to be told that it's, whether it's in our pipes or not, and if so, does it affect the rest of the population? Or is it just that property owner? And is that why there's no notification to anybody else on the street? Or is there notification?
Okay, I'm going to ask Jamie Austin, please, if you could answer, perhaps come to the podium. And, and Chris, if you want to also in a minute, talk more about the certification that was mentioned, how that's done, so we all have an understanding. Go ahead, Jamie, please.
Through your worship, as far as the lead, that's a sampling program that requires us to sample in the distribution systems, and those are typically taken from hydrants. And that's done at the same time that we sample inside of people's houses. So that way, we get a reflection of what the water quality is inside of the house, as well as the water quality that we're providing out in the street. The, any adverses or elevated lead that we see inside of the house, those are the ones that we have to notify immediately to the homeowner of. We also notify the medical officer of health, and any corrective actions that are required are carried out. So we always have that sample in the distribution system to ensure that we're not sending lead to everybody's house. You are correct, it's specific to the service line.
Okay. Chris, do you have any follow-up in terms of the certification, please?
Through your worship, I believe the reference was, I can explain it this way. When someone comes into the water department, we train them, we get their licensing. There's a short duration before they have to, we sign them up for the legislative test, which is called an operator in training test. What I like to do is make sure the, I like to make sure those individuals get out, get the full gamut of what's involved to be a water operator, and see for themselves, hands-on, what's involved. And they have an understanding of when they go to rate that test, it all seems to be logical. They're always overseen by an operator. I've had this discussion with the ministry, and she's with our official, with the enforcement officer, and I explained ourselves and how, how the system works and how we have apprentices. It's much like an apprenticeship and a master plumber situation, where they have the apprenticeship and they're learning, and they work up through the system, and they either go from operator in training to class one to a class two. I believe, if that sounds confusing, then I can possibly get back with email, potentially.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Liggitt, further questions, gentlemen, please?
Yes, so, Chris, just to clarify what you're saying so that I understand it. Part of Sandra's comments had to do with the signing off. So is it the person doing the co-op, which is apprentice, whatever it is you're calling it, or is it the actual supervisor who's fully qualified?
I'd have, through your worship, I'd have to understand what the signing off part portion of the question was, because the OIC, which are lead hands out in the field, for signing off or doing chlorine residuals or anything like that, it's all through the lead hand. The, no one time would that operator that doesn't have a license quite yet be put in a position to sign off something.
Okay, Councilor Divine, please.
Yes, thank you to the chair. Chris, you bring up a valid point. As you're training your operators, as you go through the system and the process, the internal system and process, do we have like blocks that these operators have to learn? And as they do each segment of this training, is it signed off by the supervisor, the manager, and the employee as we go through each one of these, these blocks and processes?
Through your worship, yes, it's, it's a fairly legislative setup. I have to sign off on their experience, supervisor signs off, and even the individual signs off on their experience. And it's, like I said, it's like an apprenticeship. It takes to go from OIT to a class one, you have to have one year from the date of writing the OIT. And then for a class one, you have to have three years valid experience in the time. And that's why the time starts ticking once they write that OIT, the operator in training test.
And does the engineering manager oversee this with the city?
The overseeing of that requirement, through your worship, would be me.
Okay, thanks.
No, thank you, gentlemen. We do appreciate, I think, the explanations, and I think the report's excellent. And I think that obviously council, I think, is supportive of your efforts and the follow-up, the diligence, the professionalism. Thank you very much, okay? Councilor Mata, you've got the recommendation, please.
Thank you, your worship, moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Montero. Item seven, annual water report and summary, the recommendation as printed.
Comments, members of council? I'll call the question, those in favor. Okay, the recommendation is carried, thank you very much. The next item is the City of Cambridge Business Plan. Mr. Dyke is the city manager, will introduce it, and I'll let you go ahead, sir.
Thank you, your worship, through you, members of council and the public. Tonight, we're going to present to council the 2018 Business Plan. This is the third year that we provided the business planning process to, to council. It's the business plan itself, along with the CI program you heard about earlier today, the annual report that will come out in a couple of months, a form of key program for us to talk about the important tools we use by the city to implement and report out, and the goals and objectives that council set, council and the community set through the strategic planning exercise for Cambridge Connected. The business plan itself has been used to increase our efficiencies, generate operational cost savings, and most importantly, increase our transparency and accountability to both council and, and the public. By, we advertise that we identify at the start each year the work we will undertake to achieve the goals and objectives of the strategic plan. And through the annual report and into the next year's business plan, we'll identify how we've achieved or how we've measured up in those, those areas identified going forward. The business plan itself has grown significantly over the past four years. It started, it was just initially departmental work plans. And through, from the work plans to what you see today as a result of some outstanding work by the staff of the city with respect to the commitment they put towards the services they deliver and the meeting of the goals and objectives set by council. And this program itself is led by Brooke Lambert, who's here today. She's the Director of Corporate Services, and she's done an outstanding job for us in putting the program together in the documents you see now. But also, as we move forward into it, creating measurable key indicators that will benchmark ourselves off as we go forward through this process. And with that, your worship, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lambert, too.
All right, Brooke, go ahead, please. It's, these are a number of reports you've been doing for us, and we do appreciate it. Thank you, go ahead.
Thanks, Gary, and good evening, Mayor Craig, members of council and members of the public. I am very pleased to be here today, just to give you an update on the 2018 Business Plan, which, as Gary mentioned, is sort of the, the next iteration of the business planning process that we started a few years ago. And really, this business plan is a key part of this culture that we've been talking about this evening. The evolution of the corporate culture, looking at the strategic directions, and with the implementation and approval of a strategic plan in 2016, that strategic plan really formed the overall framework that the city is using to, to move in that new direction. And the strategic plan is important in that it outlines the, the goals and the objectives of the corporation and the, the community from the consultation that we heard. However, the business plan is really that tool that the city can use to operationalize those, those goals and objectives, so that we have some key actions and initiatives to move us in the direction that we want to go in. The 2018 Business Plan, again, is that blueprint. So that's how the work will be done over the course of the year that's going to move us forward. And really, it does provide several benefits. It helps us with our decision-making, it helps to clarify staff roles, and it also forms the basis from which we can measure our progress. In the document itself, and I did provide you with a draft copy, one of the key things is to outline what the corporate structure looks like. So we're able to provide an organizational mandate, we can talk about how the city is governed, we can highlight the budget information that's relevant to this discussion, and some community highlights. We also organize all the various strategic actions in the plan by the themes in the, or sorry, strategic actions in the plan by the strategic themes that were identified in, in our initial plan. So some of the details that you can see in the business plan are a summary of all the expenditures by each department and division. We talk about revenues and how those are broken up, as well as where, where the dollars are going. Also, in the 2018 Business Plan, you'll see that there's over 41 strategic actions and 142 initiatives. And some of these initiatives are carried forward from previous years, others are new. So it puts all of that information into one framework that we can, we can kind of monitor the progress. At this point in time, I would like to outline a few of the key strategic actions that are highlighted in this plan. The community outreach work that's been undertaken recently, that's, that's a new initiative initiated last fall. And that really focuses on some of the discussions around the opioid crisis that we're, we're looking at here, the mayor's task force that was created, and various other ideas that have come forward that the city has been looking at, things like the community ambassador team, the needle pickup programs, the, the recent review on the supervised injection services. We also have an extensive community service program that was initiated a few years ago. And I think one of the really exciting pieces that is now coming into play is that Service Cambridge. So that, that one-stop shop that members of the community can come, and any questions that they have, there's now staff that, that have the information that they need to help those customers. And that's really about providing a better experience for members of the public. Engaging and developing staff has really been a key focus of the organization over the past few years. And I'd just like to, to thank Shannon Noonan and the, the work that the, the continuous improvement team has been doing. That is one of those key, key approaches to helping engage staff and making sure that everyone has the opportunity to be a leader in the corporation. Some other projects of note are things like the special event strategy, promotion of improved travel options. All of these together work towards moving us in the direction that was set out in 2016. This slide here just highlights some of the progress that we've made over the past few years. There has been over 290 initiatives included in our business plans. And since 2016, we've completed about 52 of those. So a lot of those initiatives are multi-year, they, they kind of carry forward. Right now, in the plan, we highlight 142 active initiatives. So this is some of the information that we want to make available through the plan, is basically the strategic actions, as well as all the various initiatives, and some status updates in terms of whether or not they're on target or, or needing some, some additional focus. And I think it's really important to make that connection between the work that's being done here and the work that's done every day with our staff throughout the corporation. I think Shannon's presentation, as well as the presentation we just heard on water loss by Chris, really show how all of these things fit together. You know, the asset management, the enterprise asset management piece that has been a key part of that discussion around water loss, that the focus on continuous improvement, all of that helps us achieve those, those improvements and helps us reach the goal, for example, goal number seven, which is to create and maintain a highly effective, sustainable, and coordinated local infrastructure and transportation network. So all of these pieces are integrated, and we spend a lot of time at the city, I think, talking about how we can all work together to, to make these things happen. So in terms of next steps, we will be continuing to work with the Cambridge Connected Implementation Team, which, again, is that team made up of staff from across the organization, as well as representatives from council. There's some focus that we would like to put on, especially in terms of communication, both with staff and with the public. And we want to really develop some additional tools for monitoring progress. And so one of the things that we're really excited about is how we can share this information in a more accessible and widespread format. And if this plan is endorsed by council tonight, what we're looking to do in very short order is to make all of this information available on our website, so that members of the public and staff can have real-time access to it and, and be able to do their own review of the work that we're doing. So while you did receive this draft copy of, of the information, really, we're not, we're not looking for this business plan to be sort of a hard copy on a shelf. We're looking at, for it to be a very dynamic piece of the overall corporate performance management framework that the city's been setting up. That does conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Again, Brooke, well done. Councilor Wolf, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At our meeting this afternoon, we shared a few ideas to get staff involvement. And I was wondering if you have shared that idea yet with our city manager?
I haven't had a chance, but.
Well, maybe now's a good time. We thought it might be a good incentive for staff to come to fill out our survey and participate if there was a draw to exchange places for a day with the city manager.
So we will certainly have some more conversations about some ways to encourage staff to participate in the open houses that we have planned and to, to fill out some of the surveys we'd like to get. But yeah, certainly there were some ideas that I'd be happy to share with Gary later on.
Thank you very much, Brooke. I don't have any more questions. Counselor Adshade, you have the motion, please.
Thank you, your worship, moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Mann. That report 18-015, the 2018 City of Cambridge Business Plan be approved, and that Cambridge City Council endorses the 2018 City of Cambridge Business Plan as presented.
All right, speaking to the motion. I'll call the question, those in favor. Okay, the recommendation is carried, thank you, Brooke. Kathy Paget, please, our senior planner, and it's item number eight. It's the North Cambridge Business Park, south of Allendale Road.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, senior staff, and members of the public. This is a staff recommendation report for a portion of the lands within the North Cambridge Business Park, south of Allendale Road. Two official plan and zoning by law amendments are being recommended for the lands shown as part A and part B on the figure on the slide. These lands make up a portion of the North Cambridge Business Park and are located south of Allendale Road. Part A and B will be divided by the future North-South Collector Road. Future recommendation reports for the remaining North Cambridge Business Park lands will not be brought forward until an additional public information center is held as per the direction of the Planning and Development Committee on February 13th, 2018. Staff is planning to hold a public information center in the near future. Dating back to 2003, various regional and city planning studies have been undertaken, which identify these lands as future location of prime large lot industrial lands for the region. The regional official plan identifies that a minimum lot area of The regional official plan identifies that a minimum lot area of eight hectares is required for these lands unless compromised by environmental features, property shape, the location of new roads, or existing development. The lands south of Allendale Road are compromised by these factors, and the creation of smaller lots can be justified through these tests in accordance with the regional official plan. Intermarket Real Estate Group is working with a major tenant to occupy a building south of Allendale Road in the advanced manufacturing technologies field. Proposed permitted uses on both Part A and B lands include various industrial uses, limited warehousing and distribution, offices, research and development facilities, and limited complementary uses such as financial institutions and restaurants, et cetera. No noxious uses are permitted. This includes the emission of noise, vibration, dust, odor, et cetera. So all the uses that were listed on the previous slide apply to both Part A and B lands. A transition area of limited uses is planned for in the Part A lands. This transition area is adjacent to existing residential uses on Riverbank Drive and is shown in the red hatching. With this being a time-sensitive project and staff having some knowledge about how the lands will be developed, staff have crafted a transition area to fit this proposed development. The same approach will not necessarily be taken for the transition area north of Allendale Road. Planning for the transition area north of Allendale Road will be subject to further public consultation. This transition area adjacent to Riverbank Drive was identified in the Eastside Lands Stage One Community Plan. A distance of 70 meters was determined by consulting provincial guidance documents. The purpose of the transition area is to minimize negative effects of future employment uses on existing sensitive land uses. Development is permitted to occur in the transition area but is subject to a number of restrictions, such as industrial uses are only permitted within an enclosed building, no outdoor storage or speakers, an increased development setback is provided at 30 meters, a minimum 2.4-meter solid fence along the property line, as well as a seven-meter planting With respect to heritage considerations, the farm property at 215 Allendale Road is listed on the Heritage Properties Register. A heritage impact assessment is required at the time a development application is received for the land. Also, Riverbank Drive is identified as a scenic road in the city's heritage master plan. The future north-south Collector Road will divert traffic away from Riverbank Drive. Additionally, no vehicular access or new road connections will be permitted from the employment lands onto Riverbank Drive. The existing curving alignment and undulating road profile of Riverbank Drive is not proposed to change through these amendments. The following considerations were evaluated to come to this recommendation. Land use compatibility with existing residential, the restrictions, size, and visual barriers associated with the transition area, protection of environmental features, the heritage considerations that I outlined on the previous slide, and concerns related to development, as well as public and agency input. The recommendation this evening is for Cambridge Council to approve the official plan amendment and pass the related zoning bylaws. Thank you.
Members of council, questions? Counselor Leggett, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In the region's letter to us on this item, under cultural heritage, they talk about the heritage barns and that we have only 20 left in Cambridge. Are there any on that historic site, that heritage site?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In speaking with the heritage planner, she was unsure if these heritage barns were in this particular area, but if a development application is received, that will be looked at and the region would be circulated for any regional heritage barns.
Okay, so can we get notification of what barns are heritage then in the city so we are aware for future of what's happening?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mann?
Thank you, your worship, and through you...
Questions only?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation, Kathy. The transition area, first of all, are there any residential homes going to be impacted on Parts A and B?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as in existing residential uses?
Existing residents right now that will be impacted by these changes?
There are no existing residential uses on these properties. There is the farm property at 215 Allendale Road, South Allendale Road, that is the only residential property.
Thank you. And as far as the transition area, what kind of a buffer would there be between the transition area and the homes on the other side of Part A? Is that going to be a berm of some sort, or will it be trees, or can you give me some kind of an idea?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The transition area is a full 70 meters width, and that's just an area that there could be influence on the adjacent residential land uses. When you get down to the provincial guidance documents, it's a 20-meter minimum separation distance. In this instance, there's going to be a minimum 2.4-meter solid fence along the property line, and that will be subject to a noise study depending on the future adjacent employment use, as well as a seven-meter planting strip. Typically, it's a 1.5-meter planting strip in the current zoning by law. As well, it's a 30-meter development setback for the actual development of the building, and our current zoning by law would be a 7.5-meter setback when industrial uses adjacent to a residential use.
Thank you. And just one more question for clarification, please.
Of course, go ahead.
Did I read correctly, or did I see correctly, that from that transition area or the berm, or whatever that transition will be, that the roof line or the top of the buildings would not be seen from the residence on the other side of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, from the residential viewpoint towards the employment lands?
Yes.
It is anticipated that they will, the residential uses on Riverbank Drive will see some development on the employment lands. However, there are some large trees along the rear property lines that would likely block a lot of the view.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll get into delegations, members of council. I'm going to move through these now. Dan Currie, please.
Good evening, Mayor Craig, members of council. Dan Currie, MHBC Planning. I'm here on behalf of Intermarket, who are one of the landowners within which the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment apply. I'll be very brief. The landowners support the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment and would urge council to approve it as soon as you can. Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Okay. Kathy Murphy.
Good evening, everyone.
Just pull that down, please.
Yeah, I'm not that tall. I have a little package for everybody that I had delivered just before the commencement of council. Good evening, Mayor Craig, members of council. My name is Kathy Murphy, and I am speaking on behalf of municipal addresses 4050 and 4070 Fountain Street, Cambridge. The people standing over here are only a part, a small fraction actually, of the number of people that I'll be speaking about, and that will be affected tonight by council's decision. Let me start by saying that we do not object to Intermarket's requesting to develop their property. In fact, it is high time that movement in the Eastside Lands take place. We, as a family, have been working towards this goal now for 16-plus years, and up to this point, we have seen very little progress. In 2013, the MESP illustrated the servicing of the Fountain Street corridor to be undertaken from Cherry Blossom Road going up to Middle Block Road. This was to commence this year, 2018. Last year, the Cambridge Engineering Division pushed off their decision to do this, saying that they had to rethink it. Let's see where I was again. Now we're hearing again that they're thinking of recommencing this servicing strategy to commence in 2020. What our real concern is tonight is the seriousness of making sure that the services are provided to the north end of Cambridge. Specifically, I speak of the original quick-start lands. These, if you refer to page two of your handout, will show you the MESP for those stage-one lands depicting these quick-start lands and their servicing strategy. This was to be initiated from the highest elevation points. What we need from you, the mayor and counselors of Cambridge, is a total assurance that before any decisions are made, and granted by anybody, and given permission to commence any development, there must be concrete plans put in place and guarantees that your commitment to landowners in the north are guaranteeing servicing will commence to be installed on their lands also in 2020. Do your due diligence, please, that proper capacity exists for these servicing plans. Alleviate any potential and unnecessary delays or further setbacks. We have already proposed a great plan of development for part of our own Eastside Lands, engineering for the community plan by qualified professionals that demonstrates development soundness and a perfect fit for our lands, but we're told it was too premature. Yet here we are tonight discussing development of other Eastside Lands. Sound planning ensures the whole of the Eastside Lands are to be tret equally. Then and only then is fairness and responsible government accomplished. Please refer to page three of the handout. There are some other proposed developments that have been made for the north quadrant of these Eastside Lands, and you will realize the importance of our decisions, your decisions here tonight. These lands have waited for years to come to fruition. So we do not oppose the development of industrial lands. It's high time for the movement. But we do oppose any proposal or suggestion of jumping the queue and pushing any self-serving sewage servicing strategy to overstep us. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Kathy. And I know it has been a long time. And I totally appreciate somewhat your frustration, and I appreciate the constructive way you've approached it tonight in terms of laying out to council, be fair, okay? We do appreciate that. I have no questions at this point. Okay, thank you.
John McCash, 28 Todds Road, Seguin Township. I appear just following up on what Kathy said, reiterate exactly what she said. And what's important for us is to realize that the report that you received a couple weeks ago from Sarah Austin that revealed that there was sufficient capacity to accommodate all of the lands that are envisaged to be within the near term is something that we're trying to rely on, and that's what she's tried to reiterate to you as well. Because two years ago, the proposal was that unfortunately, it's only a portion of the lands would be able to be serviced at that time. So that's the thing that we were concerned about. Our development that is on both corners of, our developments that are on both corners of Fountain Street North and Middle Block Road, they call for, they call, both properties, by the way, were in the first stage of the Eastside Lands development, both. Now, one remains, one has been removed, and it's rewarding to know as well that the MESP and secondary plan process has identified the north-eastern property. The preferred option is basically a mixed-use development, which is similar to what we were proposing. Conversely, the other property, it'll have as many difficulties as probably any other properties in the area because of some of the environmental considerations. What we do see here this evening, in the report that's before you, is, for me at least, a tremendous amount of flexibility has been afforded in the creation of official plan amendment number seven and 25 to accommodate what appears to be, at the surface to me, not knowing all of the facts, but a very, very important development. And that is that when the federal government has earmarked just a little less than a billion dollars for these type of supercluster developments, and the fact that one of the winning bids of this process was selected to be the applicant, or for this particular area, is a very significant thing for this community. For that reason, Kathy pointed out, we encourage you to do whatever is necessary to move this thing forward as quickly as possible. Everybody's waited a long time, quite a long time, but we would encourage you to pass this quickly and do whatever else is necessary. But in carrying on, in carrying on with this, I've sent you all individually a copy of the concerns we had with regards to the process to date. We consider, we asked for better mapping, we asked for a second look at land uses, because I'm aware of the rigidity of the bylaws in the City of Cambridge that has led to many disappointing developments, developers and their proposals. And so we ask that that be, you take another look at that before it's all over. And basically, that's what we had to say this evening. In addition to that, I left with, I think it's the end, a summary of maps that show you the Hammered Property, the development, how both properties have been in and out of the various stages of development, and how, and the preferred plan that has come out for the north-eastern property. I encourage you to take a look at those, and that development, as we move forward from today, hopefully you'll see the same, they'll see, be afforded the same amount of flexibility that's gone into these two official plan amendments.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. I have no questions. Thank you. Hans Weiss, please. Hans?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hans Weiss. I own some land in the future development zone, and I got the honor for the last 15 years to get those invitations to the region, to the bilingual school here. And I have to admit, this is the first time I say something because I always thought everybody's so much smarter. 15 years, it's a half a generation. We are working on this land. And I thought it's time to speak up a little bit what I think, and I don't take a lot of time. 15 years of planning, discussions, fightings, postponings took a toll on everything, more or less. I saw planner coming and going, why to few, in all those years. I saw all the misunderstanding. We missed a lot of opportunities in all those years. One example is Dr. Oetker, who went to London. There was another company who went to Gartridge, maybe even more, I don't know. But in one thing, they never disagreed with each other, that was the land use. It was always employment land, but I have to admit, I would have preferred residential land, and that's normal. And that's normal. But it is what it is. And it is hard to change anything when for 15 years they pulled at least on this one subject, on one rope. Now I think it's about time that we come to an end to this. I talked with a few landowners and they agreed with me. Not all of them, but most of them. So that's a good start. Like I said, we lost a lot of time and opportunities in the last few years. And it's time for a final decision because I think we all have a responsibility and the duty to get this ahead. And this is all what I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, sir. And I'm pleased you came here tonight. And I'll be speaking to council after the delegations. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have Sandy. Sandy, I'm afraid I can't pronounce. Please help me with your last name.
Akione.
Thank you very much.
Sandy Akione from Inner Market. My nephew asked me tonight, 12 years old, where are you going? And I said, I'm going to a government meeting to get some land approved for employment. Why? Create jobs and economic activity. That's what we're doing here tonight. We're trying to get land approved. It's been a long time for employment purposes. And they've alluded to 10, 15 years. The region, not the city of Cambridge, but the overall region is down to a handful of industrial sites. So not only does this have to move forward tonight, but the balance of these Eastside lands, Cathy Murphy's land, we're not trying to jump queues, get priority on anyone. We've been working with staff. And staff under Gary Dyke's leadership have been tremendous in trying to find solutions to move things forward. But we've gotten to a point in the region, not just in Cambridge, there's not very much employment land left. We've worked too long on this situation. And again, it's, we're not leaving, Cathy's not that far behind. We want to see this whole area go. This is the first part. City's made a major commitment on building the S P S in 2019. That's the sanitary pumping station. That'll service the Eastside lands. So like I said to my nephew tonight, it creates what I do, because he doesn't understand what I do. Sometimes I don't understand what I do. But it creates in this instance, jobs, factories, jobs and taxes for the community. That's all we're trying to do here tonight. It's all about jobs and taxes for the community in a region that's almost run out of employment lands. This isn't some big, nothing's happening here that's a conspiracy or anything. That's all we're doing. Gary, thank you to you, your staff under your leadership. I think we've gotten a lot further in the last many years. We're almost there. Like I said, the S P S is scheduled. And again, thank you and your staff. It's been great working on this. And obviously, we have a lot more work to do here. So we're very positive and encouraged. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, your comments in particular. I have no questions, okay? Thank you, sir. John Hofstadter, please.
Mayor Craig, fellow councillors and members of the audience. My name is John Hofstadter. And I farm on 215 Allendale Road with my wife Maria. I've lived in this area all my life, some 70 years proximate. I'm not going to give it away. But I've been here a long time and I've seen a lot of change. I've seen, you know, cornfields and bean fields and hayfields be converted into building Toyotas and Corollas and Lexuses. I mean, fabulous things have happened in this town. I love the town. It hurts and it's fearful when you see change. But I have seen a lot of change. And it's part of the time and part of the way things go. We evolve and we keep going on. Like my dad farmed with horses. I farmed with tractors. And the next generation is farming with computer-driven tractors that drive on their own. So everything is advancing. I see that it's time that this changes. And we've been working on this for years and years. I see a group of people that want to take this forward to the next step, Inner Market. And I believe they will do a very good job with this and make the city proud because other things they have done in this community have been successful and top-notch, what I have seen. My big fear is that we keep dragging our feet because we've done studies for roads, studies for sewers, and a million studies been done and it's been restudied and so forth. And I believe that it will be a time that somebody's going to knock on your door or make a phone call and you're going to say, we have nothing for you. I think we should get something ready and move ahead so that it can proceed. It's sort of like being on the farm. I have to order my seed, fertilizer, soil test, everything, years in advance. But if I'm working on rented land, I don't know if I should order that seed. These people, if they don't get possession of the land and have the okay, the follow-through and advance with their project, they're sort of in a bad spot. And there's been a lot of work done. And I feel that we have to move on this. A lot has been said tonight. I agree with most of it. It's, everybody's frustrated. It's been going on a long time. I think I'm going to end this call because this conversation. But I hope that you do the right thing and approve this zoning so that people can continue to plan ahead and make things happen and make this city proud. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Okay? Sandra Hill, please.
Well, good evening once again. I understand Pine Bush Road is about the same as your area out on Fountain. But I am very, very concerned about the provincial policy and the way the environmental land development works. I mean, if you live upstream, you might be all right. But if you leave downstream and those people get flooded or sewage backs up in their basement, that's not okay with me. So I think that this provincial policy statement talks about planning for infrastructure and public services, facilities that extend beyond 20 years. So that's right in the policy section. And this interim sanitary sewer pumping station, which is not climate change, green emissions. It's diesel, run with diesel fuel. It's huge hydro costs. And it's not environmentally friendly. It will take the water and portions of sludge from the pumping station and put it into the creek. The policy statement talks about green infrastructure. It talks about premal surface, strengthening storm management. It talks about the requirement of the natural heritage. It talks about the Grand River. So it talks about our watershed and our scale of integrating a long-term plan. These people want a long-term plan. That's what they're waiting for. Now, I talked to you last time I was here about a waste treatment plant. Well, the city of Durmond just won national-wide, Google it. They won the award for $30 million high-tech infrastructure sewage treatment plant to get people off of septic sewage systems. It was nationwide and it looks pretty cool online. You got to check it out. That could have probably been done a few years ago for these people over by the airport. I talk about in hydraulic water intake functions. When that lady was pulling up the map there, it showed green. Those are protected intake watershed functions that the region really has to seriously look at. I talk about the permitting development on adjacent lands that's protected by heritage property. And I'll talk about what should be really there, even if you're going to put that main highway in there and trucks. It's going to be like an inner with smog and trucks and idling and brake jakes. You should put a sound barrier wall for those people on Riverbank and maybe if the people on the other side. But a sound barrier wall sounds more because it looks like it's going to be a pretty big development, residential and industrial there. I talk about the potential of the human risk and the economic cost of the hazards and the long-term social and economic wellbeing of the existing residents there. Their land values. I mean, I don't know. I like living in the industrial area, but I own a trucking company. And you know, I've been in that area for 34 years, so I get it. But for other people that want to sell their industrial residential home, they see trucks parked, they see idling, they see smoke cold in the winter, stinks the diesel fuel, they might not want to buy their house and might lose their value. I think you just need to be careful what you're doing here on, like courier, courier service. Well, that could be FedEx. And FedEx does? There's nowhere in the details does it say, commercial vehicles under 5,600 KGs in your official plan amendment or your zoning bylaw. So you really need to detail it better. Personally, the policy, the province says, right now, you can't make this decision because right now, reflecting your official plan, you can't change that zoning. So you want to change the official plan first and then put your hands up and change the zoning bylaw. Here's the important part. The city has no financial tools at this moment in time to do this infrastructure. The city is in financial constraints. Personally, what really bothers me is the enforcement measures. Even your bylaw enforcement officer noted to you people on council, and it's in the minutes, that they don't have the funding to enforce this 25% measurement in your zoning bylaw. I don't think they have the money to enforce a lot of enforcement in this city when public complains. So what are they going to do when they're getting complaint after complaint and no enforcement shows up? And you guys can't hire anymore? Maybe the budget is in the forecast, doesn't have it. So if you don't have city capital funding, nowhere in the policy, the regional policy or the city policy, does it say you can do an interim pumping station? Nowhere in the policy station does it talk about interim servicing. Okay?
Would you conclude now, please? Sandra?
Yep. And the most important thing is the area noted by the region as a surface water intake protection zone and the capabilities of the financial strengths. And it's not in the current budget this year. And secondly, the enforcement. So I think those things you really had to think about. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next delegation is, it's Grady Atkin, please. Now, did I pronounce that correctly or help me out here a little?
Not quite. It's grown ya.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Craig, councillors, staff, members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words to you today regarding the North Cambridge Business Park Recommendation Report on tonight's agenda. I speak as a resident of Cambridge and count myself lucky to live on the beautiful scenic route that is Riverbank Drive. Firstly, I wish to say I'm pleased that our city is part of the Innovator Supercluster Initiative with the Advanced Manufacturing Supercluster being based here in Ontario. It is important that our city builds on a strong economic past and takes advantages of new technologies and developments in the next-generation manufacturing space. I understand there is a need for the city to move the planning process forward to enable the lands in question to be shovel-ready, to take advantage of the current opportunities. From reading the circulated report, yes, all 200-plus pages of it, I note that there are a number of amendments to the proposed changes to the city's official plan and bylaws since they were presented to the public in December and to council in February. I can see that these amendments have been proposed to enable the development process to run as quickly and smoothly as possible and to attract potential organizations to the area. My biggest concern with the proposal is the treatment of the transition zone on the western portion of the lands to the rear of the properties on Riverbank Drive. I was disappointed to see that rear loading will now be permitted on the industrial lands. But understand this is necessary for potential businesses. At February's meeting, a proposed transition zone illustration was presented. And it looked like this. Behind the residential properties on Riverbank Drive, there would be one and a half meter or five-foot-high chain link fence along the property line. Then an 18-meter or 60 feet planted with trees. Then a 2.4-meter or eight-foot solid fence, followed by one and a half meter or five-foot planting area and a further six meters or 20 feet yard at the back of the industrial building. In the current proposed changes, this is now going to be just a solid fence or noise barrier wall at the property line and a seven-meter planting strip adjoining the industrial yard. This is in addition to the reduction of the front yard minimum from 12 meters in the current bylaw to half that at six meters. With the lack of a further public information center as previously directed by the Planning and Development Committee, I am worried that this process is being pushed through without the necessary public involvement and hope that this is not something we'll be seeing more of in the rest of the planning for this business park and the development of the remainder of Eastside lands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll deal with this now, council. Councilor Reed, you have the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's moved by myself and it is seconded by Councillor Ametta. The Recommendation Report for the North Cambridge Business Park, South of Allendale Road, Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendments. I don't think you want me to read all of the amendments. May I speak to the motion?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm going to be supporting this motion. And the reason that I support this motion is that it has been a long time that we've been working in this area. And I've been to all of the meetings on the Eastside lands, some of them pertaining to this particular part, but many to other parts of it. And I agree with a lot of the residents in the time that it has taken us to try and move forward. It became, came to us that we had an opportunity here for the Quick Start lands. And I really believe that this project needs to go forward. It's an extraordinary opportunity because there are federal funds that are available to Inner Market to bring to us and to create this wonderful opportunity for advanced manufacturing technology field. And so I think that if we didn't move forward in this manner tonight, we may lose that opportunity to have this in our area. And to me, it is going to bring employment and it is going to be to the advantage of our city. So I'm urging everybody on the council tonight to support this resolution. Thank you.
Councillor Montero.
Your worship, only two words. It's time.
It's the best speech you've made in a long time. Councillor Man.
Thank you, your worship. And just in speaking to the motion, the two things that came up tonight that concern me are making sure, and just a note that we could make in relation to making sure that the servicing is provided, that has been talked about by some of the delegations, as well as the buffer zone between the backyards of those who are on Riverbank Drive and the lots on the other side of that transition line. That's what I would like to see. I would like to make sure that we take into consideration the residents' concerns and that the servicing that has been talked about is made note of. Thank you.
Okay. I've got no more speakers. I just want to say that I'm pleased we're at this point in terms of moving on this particular issue tonight. But we have an obligation to the other members of the community. And I think in a very constructive way tonight, they've brought that home very clearly. And I think we have to do everything possible with the region to And I think we have to do everything possible with the region to move on with the other properties also. I'm going to call for a recorded vote because I think it's very important, this particular vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
The motion is carried. I'm going to declare a two-minute recess. I'll remember your name, though.
I don't, that's the first time. That's the first time I speak in public. Yes. No, it's about time. Half a generation, they lost in this process.
I was happy that you were doing my thing, but, you know, if you're writing a law, you can't, you can't say no.
We have billions of acres in this country with snakes and devils and everything else. But the few acres here, the bodies made where we need employment in the future, maybe we get a recession in six, seven months, two months.
But you can't, we can't, we can't plan it. You can't keep planning if we just say no, no, no.
So this is important.
To match the rest of the world.
I have a little. You have a lot. It's been an ongoing thing, and I haven't brought it forward.
How are you doing?
I'm fine. How are you? We're all aging together.
I know. That's why you have to move it on.
Everybody will retire before this happens. It's not that I want to see it happen, but it's, it's time. It's going to happen, whether I say yes or no. We are absolute. So let's make it happen, so we can do it right.
Getting this through is good.
And now people complain.
Always somebody, always somebody who complains. Always. I learned.
You must be married to the wrong woman.
Oh, no. I mean, this was the one thing which I did right. You know, I met her right.
Yeah. I have to ask wonderful questions. Getting overturned. Thank you.
Got most members here. I went away a second. Here he is. Number two, council, please. All right, I'm sorry. Councillor Mann, please. The Consent Agenda, All Except, General Committee. Councillor Wolf, you're pulling that? All right, Councillor Mann.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Adchade, that the Consent Agenda be accepted as printed except for item number three.
Okay. Comments? Councillor, no, I had you on here for some rea-- okay. Just give me a second. Councillor Mata, put yours back on. Okay, Councillor Mata?
Thank you, your worship. Right after we pass this, I would like to have a member in the audience speak who had requested to speak. I emailed you all earlier about it. So I'd like us to take a two-thirds majority vote.
Okay. I'm going to do that under Other Business. Okay? Could you better, please?
Well, I'd like to do it towards the beginning because they're from London and they've been here all this time.
All right. Fair enough. Okay. I'm going to do the Consent Agenda. I'm going to do Councillor Wolf, and then you can raise your, your motion.
Thank you.
All right. Councillor Mann, please. You've got it on the table. It's the Consent Agenda, All Items Except the General Committee. Okay? Everybody understand that? Any comments? Those in favor? Okay, it's carried. Councillor Wolf, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Adchade. General Committee Meeting, Recommendation that the minutes of the General Committee Meeting held Tuesday, March 6, 2018 be approved except for item six.
Okay, so we're going to approve everything except item six, which is?
The Riverside Dam.
Riverside Dam. Okay, all items in the minutes, okay? Going to call that first. Any comments? Those in favor? Okay, the recommendation is carried. Councillor Wolf.
In item, item six of the General Committee Meetings, moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Adchade, that report eighteen-zero-sixteen Riverside Dam Class EA Study Completion be referred back to staff to report back to council on how to proceed with rebuilding and/or repairing the dam. Speaking to that motion. Tonight I have pulled the Riverside Dam Class Environmental Assessment. I have many concerns with the decision reached by council to ignore the advice of staff in various organizations, including indigenous groups, and reject the preferred alternative of naturalization of the river. Unfortunately, I could not be here on March 6, and I promised my fellow committee members in SEAC and EMHAC that I would speak up tonight. I realize this was a difficult decision for some councillors and the only decision for others. This has been a very emotionally charged discussion from the beginning, and I understand that we sometimes vote from the heart as opposed to the head. I was disappointed to hear that the mayor announced council unanimously supported rebuilding the dam before hearing from staff or the delegations. Our representative from SEAC, Brad Hall, came to speak in favor of naturalization, as did Christine Dearlove. It was disturbing to them and others who supported naturalization to hear that council had already made up its mind. In a letter I received from Christine Dearlove in December, she points out how science, facts, and reason have been applied by professionals to arrive at the solution which they think is best and also aligns with our strategic plan. So far, this advice has cost the city over $300,000 in the form of this assessment, and yet we seem prepared to ignore it. The Strategic Plan states that the City of Cambridge needs to ensure that sustainability principles are part of city decision-making process. A naturalized river is sustainable. A rebuilt dam is part of the public infrastructure, which will need to be maintained forever by the city. The Strategic Plan encourages innovative approaches to address environmental changes. Naturalizing the river is an innovative environmental approach. We are no longer trying to dictate where the water will flow. A natural flow will be reinstated. Naturalizing the river meets all environmental objections, objectives, and legislation. The GRAC, the Provincial Endangered Species Act, et cetera. Flooding would be reduced, the water quality would improve, sediment would not accumulate, fish and other aquatic life would be better off, as would any number of land-based creatures. We could showcase our natural heritage by removing the barrier to the river through boardwalks, viewing platforms, and outdoor classrooms, which is another element within our strategic plan. Finally, the City of Cambridge within the Strategic Plan has a responsibility to manage city resources in a fiscally responsible and sustainable manner. Naturalizing the river is estimated to cost the City of Cambridge 5.1 million. Rebuilding the dam is estimated to cost $8.5 million. This is a $3.4 million difference. Finally, there has been much concern that we will ruin the park by removing the dam and mill pond. I disagree. We will still have our baseball diamonds, soccer fields, spray pads, skate park, our picnic sites, as well as less flooding and increased fishing opportunities. Boaters will not have to portage the dam, and the river overall will be healthier, which respects those who live downstream from us. The river before the mill pond and after the dam is beautiful. A naturalized speed river will also be a thing of beauty as it winds through the park. We have the opportunity to create new memories and vistas. We can spend money we save on not rebuilding and maintaining a dam for enhancement of the park with boardwalks, trails, and improved access to the river. I do not expect that when we vote on this motion again, naturalization will be your choice. However, I need to stand up for what I believe to be the right decision and let people know that rebuilding the dam was not a unanimous vote.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I can only say that I wish our friend had been able to attend the meeting when this issue was discussed because there was so much information that was shared. And she's absolutely right that it was an emotional issue, but I think there were a lot of very good comments that were made. One of the things I do want to say, two of the things I want to say, and I said them the night that we discussed this, was if this was the dam in Hespler and if it was the dam at Park Hill, I would still feel the same, that we would rebuild regardless of where the dam was located. The one thing I want to say is that the EA had to occur regardless of what the outcome is. And we did not ignore the naturalization of the river, but what we did do was, we know that the survey that was conducted by the consultants left out a very critical aspect of criteria when the results were tallied, and that would have changed the outcome of the survey results. And I think that's something that was very important, and we talked about that at the last meeting. So I will not agree with the motion that's been brought forward because I stand firm and I am adamant that the only alternative for Riverside Park is to rebuild or repair that dam.
Councillor Montero.
Your worship, I think my blood pressure just went up a couple of numbers. The thing is, this was discussed the last time. Yes, it was unanimous for the people that were here. Our friend, Councillor Pam Wolf, wasn't here, but I respect your opinion. But we made a decision then. We stand by our decision. And as to what, while our vote was then, and as far as naturalizing the river, we didn't, we don't know that river any other way. That's been like that for a hundred and forty years, or a hundred and twenty, whatever the number is, it's over a hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty. But that's, we don't know that. Yes, we are not losing anything as far as the park goes, as the baseball diamonds, the everything that's there, but we're losing the view, the mill pond that's been there for over a hundred years, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, somebody said, I'll send to be corrected in a number of years. So I disagree with her a hundred percent. We made a decision, we stick by it.
Councillor Mata.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Mann and Councillor Montero raised a lot of my thoughts. I do hear my friend, Councillor Wolf, she does bring up a lot of good points, and I do have some of those concerns as well. And what I'd like us to do-- I do have some of those concerns as well. And what I'd like us to do is, I still want to rebuild the dam or repair it, but I want to look at taking some steps that can help address those concerns. You know, looking at things like fish ladders so that the fish can move better, cleaning out the pond every so often, or structuring the dam in such a way that you can open it up to let the sediment through so it doesn't build up, and things like that. You know, it's really a part of our history. There wouldn't be a Preston without a dam, and there wouldn't be a Gold or Hesper either with the dams that we have. And, you know, they created, they created the power for the industry that built this town, and this city, and it's a big part of our heritage. And I look at what's happened at other areas where they've removed the dam, such as the Fisher Mills Dam and the one near Dundas on Crook's Hollow, how the mill pond just basically went down to nothing. And I'm not saying it's necessarily gonna go down to that point here because the river is wider, but it won't be the same. And yes, the, yes, the park is more than the mill pond, that's very true. But I like it the way it is, and I believe that it's a magnet for tourists, that it would attract a lot, a lot more people to the area. And I think we're gonna see a lot of good things happen down by the water. And water attracts people, it's been proven time and time. So I support the dam. Thank you.
Counselor Ligon.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say to Counselor Wolf that I really appreciate her pulling it from the consent agenda, that, you know, that it's usually me who does that all the time, and I think that it irritates some counselors when I do that. But I do that because I think there's certain things that need to be discussed in the public's eye. And I think it's important that the public does know that it wasn't unanimous, that Counselor Wolf does stand behind her principles and convictions. So I just want to say I appreciate the fact that you've done this and that we've had this debate again while you're here.
Okay, I have no more speakers, and I'm gonna make a couple of comments. First of all, the criticism that in fact we had announced our vote ahead of time, you're quite correct. That was, I should not have done that. I haven't done that before. For some reason, I blurted that out to somebody and said, yeah, I'm gonna support the dam being rebuilt. Usually I wait until I hear all the delegations and so on. So I accept that criticism. I think it's cor-- it is in fact factual in terms of what I had said ahead of time. And I don't do that. In fact, I had Counselor Adchade even remind me, and in fact, why did you do that? And he was quite correct about that. The other thing, too, is about, well, we get professional reports, absolutely. And we, and I take the greatest pride in the reports and the people, the staff here that author them. But if in fact we are only going to always accept a staff report, then we don't need to be here. And we have to look at it that way. We're here for the gray areas, we're here for the emotional issues, we're here to in fact have a different point of view of how the city should advance. And I think overwhelmingly, we support staff reports. And this was one time that I did not, and I think that the comments that Counselor Mann made about the other dams in the city, I feel very strongly about that, that I wouldn't pull down the Hespler Dam or the Park Hill Dam, not in this lifetime anyways. Thank you. Gonna call the question. And if I may, we're voting on the recommendation to rebuild, the report to go back to rebuild. That's what we're voting on.
Through the chair for clarification.
Let the clerk tell us what we're voting on.
Clarification, the recommendation which is requested on a recorded vote is to refer the matter back to staff so we can report back on how to proceed with rebuilding or and/or repairing the dam.
Okay, everybody understand that? And if I may make one other comment before we head off. No, same as last time. When I said it was unanimous, it was unanimous of everybody that was present, okay? And that's not a criticism, Counselor Wolf, okay? It's just an observation. All right, recorded vote, folks.
And the motion carries eight to one.
Okay. All right, Counselor Mata, you have a request, please.
Thank you, your worship. We have a delegation in the audience. His name is Alexander Essex. He's a professor from the University of Western Ontario who teaches computer science and engineering. He would like to speak regarding the report that's gonna come back in April. I think it's got to do with the website. I think that's the topic. He'll be away in April, so he would like to speak tonight because he can't be at that meeting. He'd like council to have the information in advance. And if staff want to be able to answer his questions and report back, they've got that option to do that. So he's in the audience. I'd like to put forward a motion to waive the procedural bylaw to allow him to speak, just to hear what he's got to say, and then we can take the information and get back to him, or, you know, however you see fit. But I really have strong convictions that he should speak. And he has spoken in other cities. I haven't actually seen his presentations, haven't read his reports. I am honest about that. I'd like to hear what he's got to say. So I'm putting that forward, and go with your convictions, but I'd like to put that forward.
You need a second, okay? So, Counselor Ligon, if I may, members of council, this was brought to my attention, I think it was today with the clerk. My understanding from the clerk is that the professor would meet with us, clerk and I, to discuss this particular issue. I said, that's fine, I don't mind doing that. And I would extend it to anybody else that wants to meet. Tonight's not tonight because of the agenda we've got, and I think we have to have a better advanced notice of these kind of things. That's my position. Okay? Counselor Ligon.
The, and I think we are all in the same boat. You know, we received the package with his comments. I haven't finished reading that package because of the size of our agenda. But I think that the fact that this gentleman can't be here in April when it's brought to us again, that would be the opportunity for council to hear him, but he's not gonna be here. So to meet separately doesn't do us all the, we don't have that opportunity to hear him or ask him questions personally. So I think just for the sake of education, you know, not, not of it being something that's controversial, just for education, which we didn't have the last time, I would, I, personally, I'd like to hear what he's got to say tonight.
Okay, Counselor Montero, please.
Your worship, I, too, I think this has to do with electronic voting. I'd like to hear what he has to say. I'm in agreement of him speaking, although we have a full agenda, and it looks like we're gonna be here for a while. But, you know, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Counselor Adchade.
Thank you, your worship, and I too would be very interested in hearing what he has to say, especially considering he can't be here in April. And I think it's something we can all learn from, and I'm really looking forward to be educated on this topic. So I'd really like to hear this individual speak.
Counselor Devine.
Yes, I certainly like to hear him speak as well. He's here. I think this is a controversial issue. There's, there's two sides to everything, so I'd like to hear both sides.
Counselor Mann.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to hear what this gentleman has to say. What I don't like is that this gets thrown at us at the last hour. And we've had an incredibly busy time of late with the packages that we had last night, the package that we have tonight, and the things that have been thrown at us. And I have received a package from a member of our community, Randy Kefner, who has provided me with information to read about electronic voting, and I haven't had the opportunity to get through that yet. And I know I'm gonna want time so that I can read all this, and I can digest this, and I would like it if he would come back at another time. And that this could have been spoken to instead of having the individual come here tonight and be here and put us in this position. I would like to hear him. I'll agree to it, but I certainly wish that we would give ourselves more latitude in future because it just takes far too long, or it's, I think we need to give, give more credit to each other and give, be more considerate of each other and not just throw something at us at the last minute. I will hear it tonight, but in future, I think we need to give more time.
Okay, I've got no more speakers. I'm gonna make it a recorded vote. It needs to be a two-thirds, which would be six votes. Okay? Recorded vote. I can't believe it. Okay. Yep, that's good. All right, the gentleman?
Mr. Mayor, member of councils, thank you for the accommodation. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As you know, I am not going to be present in April when this matter will be brought to you. I also like to thank the city clerk and the managers for indulging this opportunity to discuss this issue. As mentioned, I'm an assistant professor at Western with a specialization in cybersecurity and electronic voting. On February 11th, the Cambridge City website fell victim to a criminal for-profit cyber attack known as cryptojacking, which caused visitors to download and run a cryptocurrency mining application without their knowledge or consent. A statement issued by the Cambridge Chief Information Officer pointed out that no information was stolen from the visitor's devices. Now, while this is true, it misses the point somewhat. The house was broken into, and yes, nothing was stolen, but the burglars did make a few phone calls and they turned up the furnace. It was a breach. And yes, Cambridge was not the only victim of this attack. There were thousands of others globally. But Cambridge, however, is special as it was the, as it was the victim of a cyber attack only months before plans to deploy online voting. So if hackers can cause your citizens to run cryptocurrency malware today, what in principle stops them from delivering vote-stealing malware in October? This is an important question, and frankly, one that your city must confront if it is to proceed along its current lines. Since the city did not appear to acknowledge this incident when it occurred, I took it upon myself to bring it to the attention of the local media. I understand that it made the front page of the record and has since been covered by CBC, Huffington Post, and others. Now, following this coverage, I was contacted by a local resident, Randy Kefner, and these fine citizens over here, asking if I would come and bring this attention to your attention this evening. And I wish to make a couple of key points here. Number one is that your site was not actually hacked. It was a third-party resource that got hacked, and your website simply includes it, meaning that you can effectively do nothing wrong, yet still be vulnerable to a cyber attack. Two, online elections are not locally-run elections. You plan to contract a third-party vendor who, in turn, will subcontract out its IT infrastructure. Our research has shown a trend towards multinational entities with privileged access to voter credentials and ballot information. Three, the entire question of online voting security is complex, and with all due respect to the city staff, I am not convinced that they appreciate this fully. Of course, you should listen to the clerk's report and the CIO's report when it comes out, but you should also be aware that other voices perceive the risk of online voting as being too great. For example, Toronto decided not to pursue online voting following their 2014 RFP, citing cybersecurity reasons. Last April, Guelph made the unprecedented decision to reverse course on online voting and return to in-person polling. They also cited cybersecurity reasons. The Minister of Democratic Institutions is also clear Canada will not pursue online voting because of cybersecurity reasons. Last week, I was in the United States, and I spoke to MIT Professor Ron Rivest, one of the founding fathers of modern cryptography, and I told him that I hoped to speak to you about this issue. He wanted to make sure that I conveyed to you in no uncertain terms that online voting is considered by many computer scientists to be a bad idea. Now, contrast these voices against your own staff who have stated they are confident that the vendor, quote, "has proper protections in place to ensure the integrity of the vote." Based on what exactly? What does the staff know that the rest of us don't? There are no federal or international standards for this kind of thing. Elections Canada has no standards for selecting online voting. It's not in the EAC's VVSG in the United States. Most of the municipalities that are adopting online voting come up with their own RFPs. They make their own decisions. In fact, I asked the Ontario Minister of Municipal Affairs for a list of all the Ontario cities that are planning to do online voting. He doesn't know. Apparently, nobody does. So we're gonna have to sit down and call them all. So obviously, you're not consulting with the federal government or other Ontario municipalities, or apparently computer security experts. So then, who are you consulting with? The vendors? I mean, I think you should consult with the vendors, but maybe don't stop there. Last October, I spoke at an AMCTO panel alongside the Cambridge City Manager of Technology Systems, and also the city clerk for Markham and a third-party cybersecurity firm. And they characterized election cybersecurity as something that one undertakes to, quote, "protect the brand." Let me be clear. The first priority is to protect the democratic process and the trust that your fine citizens place in it. And for a great many reasons, I do not believe online voting serves this priority. Now, of course, it is your city, and therefore your decision. So I wish you all the best in your upcoming election. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Mata, please.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I haven't read any of your reports or anything, but when people vote online, is it anonymous, or is there a way to track how they voted? I don't know anything about it. Like, is, is there a chance that you could track how people vote, like?
Well, so I guess the question is, who are you, who are you worried about tracking? So for example, one of the things we're worried about in online voting is something called over-the-shoulder coercion, right? So, you know, grandpa doesn't like how you vote, and they can watch how you vote. They can stand there and ask you to vote in a particular way. But consider the fact that to vote, you typically have to go to a website and log in with your username and some kind of password or credential. So the election server knows your identifying information and also how you voted. Now, we did a study last year in the Western Australia state election, and we found that they employed a denial-of-service cloud provider. This cloud provider also sees the voter's credentials and ballot selections as it passes through their server. It actually passes through their server in an unencrypted state. So they see how you voted as well. Any, any nation-states or intelligence agencies that have the ability to influence that third party also have privileged access to how your voters might vote. And then, of course, the vendor themselves, in principle, although they promise they won't, has access to that data as well. Now, the Canada Elections Act is really, really nice. It's very clear. It's ballot secrecy. The legislation is very simple. The vote is secret. That's, that's it. And with online voting, that's not entirely true.
Counselor Ligon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How would we know whether we had been hacked or breached in the last election? Would there be a way of knowing that? Our clerk is secure, he had stated that we weren't. But would we even know if we had been?
There are several troubling possibilities here. One is that you're hacked and you find out about it, and then you tell everyone. The other is that you are hacked, and that's to say the city, city management finds out about it and maybe doesn't, maybe doesn't present the full sequence of events. And I've been privately told stories about this happening, although nothing, nothing's, you know, concrete. And then, in the last case, gave me--
Just gotta be a bit careful here.
I'm not, yes, yeah. I'm not referring to anything--
We have a lot of committee here. We don't have anybody rebutting. We're sitting here taking the criticism. It's completely one-sided, and that's fine. I understand that. But I, you know, there's, there's a lot of comments that can be made, too. So you must be very unhappy with Doug Ford. Are you? I mean, that was done online. Are you suggesting that also was hacked?
Sorry, the what?
The PC.
Oh, the, oh, the PC. Well, no, I'm not suggesting anything.
Go ahead.
So. Although, we did look at the-- So, although we did look at the server and discovered that it was in the United States, so, I mean, there's jurisdictional questions, I think, there. But the last case, and this is, again, something that, and, you know, I should point out that I'm referring to cases internationally. This is a question that is troubling to, you know, everyone globally. This is not just a concern that the citizens of Cambridge confront. This is something that we all confront globally. So the last case is the worst-case scenario, which is a nation-state was involved, and that they hack you, and that you just never find out. And that's certainly possible, although we have yet to see a case of that where it later comes to light.
Okay. Counselor Montero, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you. What did you mean by "protect the brand"? What does that mean?
I didn't say that. I don't know what it means. That was one of the city managers that made that remark at the AMCTO panel.
What did you think it meant?
Well, obviously, the city is a corporation, and as a corporation, it has a corporate brand. And so perhaps protecting that brand is an important part. Certainly, you should protect your brand. But in the context of a democratic election, I'm not sure it's the first priority.
Thanks.
All right. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. When you started this, you didn't identify yourself, and I wonder if you could just tell me who you are?
Yes, so, thank you. The counselor previously mentioned, my name is Alexander Essex. I'm an assistant professor of software engineering at Western University.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Leggett, please.
Through you again, Mr. Chair. People tend to think that municipalities, there's nothing there for somebody to want to hack or to breach. But yet, I remember the past director of CSIS actually speaking about municipalities being hacked and breached. In particular, the concern had to do with investors from outside of the country wanting to elect certain people to municipal seats in order to get through what they wanted. I can't remember the director's name. So have you, in your research, studied that?
We have, so we have not, in our research, studied Ontario municipal elections. We've looked at national and state-level elections mostly to this point, although I'm sure we'll be interested in what happens in October. And it is also true that the CSE, in their report to the Democratic, Minister of Democratic Institutions, acknowledges that the risk to cities and provinces is lower than the risk to a country of hacking. That said, you, you know, you can talk to the counselors in Guelph about cases of election fraud. Of course, that, in that case, that was a conventional attack, if you will. Taking that into the digital space would be also something that would be of concern. So instead of having robo-calls, robo-e-mails, you know, "don't forget to vote," "click this link," and so forth.
Counselor Mann, please. I'm sorry. I just, Counselor Adshad, I cut somebody off.
Thanks, your worship, and thanks for your presentation. From your experience, obviously, you're a lot more knowledgeable in this than I am. What is your concern? What would your concern be for? Like, could you lay it on layman's terms? What is the big concern? My, from what I've seen, the only, I didn't, the last time this came to, I thought we should just keep paper ballots. My concern was, you know, someone in the home could, if they got IDs, they could vote for numerous people. That's correct, right? There's no way that could be verified. Is that correct? Is that a possibility?
Sorry, that...
No, if it's mailed out to residents, and you have, like, there's five voters in that residence...
Right.
Or whatever. Or you went and got, you could probably ask for them, I guess, if people aren't going to vote. If you had the IDs of numerous people, you could vote numerous times. Is that correct?
Right, yeah. So that's a form of remote voting, just as online voting, internet voting is. Mail-in voting is also a form of remote voting. It's just a kind of a conventional, it's a non-electronic form. Mail-in voting is also considered to not be the greatest from a privacy perspective. But at least in that case, you have to go, as an attacker, to the extent of attacking the mail system, to really change things. It doesn't do anything for coercion. I know in Washington State, for example, they have boasted about having vote parties where they all get together in the kitchen and vote together, so it doesn't address that as well. But in general, and I know that it sort of boggles the mind of many people to hear a computer scientist saying this, but in general, the best way to conduct a vote, if ballot secrecy really is important to you, is to do it in person, on a paper ballot, and then hand-count it.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Wolf, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about hacking, other than, you talked about how a system might be able to see who you voted for. Would hackers be able to change your vote?
So, anything in the software world, you know, can be changed. The issue is that it's difficult to see what is actually happening, right? So I can go to the voting website, and I can click a button for a candidate, and I can click the cast button and get a "thank you for voting" message. But after that point, I really, as a voter, have no evidence, no direct evidence beyond just the, sort of, the well wishes that the vote really, truly was counted. And this is really one of the problems with electronic and online voting. So, you know, how your vote makes it to the ballot box, or whether it makes it to the ballot box, is just something that is difficult to prove. And I know, because I did my PhD trying to find ways that we could actually provide evidence in an online election that your vote was counted. The only way that we are aware of on how to do that in a sort of convincing way is to use extreme cryptography and cryptographic protocols. But unfortunately, most election management bodies aren't ready for that yet, maybe one day, but not yet. So in the meantime, we don't have a compelling way to prove the vote counted. And as far as what the software does, malware can hit your computer, it can hit the voting server, it can hit the network in between. It's, there's a number of possibilities.
Do we know of any system that's foolproof? Because we know with paper ballots, ballot boxes can be missing, they can be stuffed.
Right.
There's can be coercion in front of the poll, at the poll. You know, we've seen this in other countries internationally. I see our biggest problem in Cambridge is actually getting to people to vote once, never mind trying to vote several times. But, you know, with a less than 20 percent, you know, voter turnout...
Right.
That's the problem. I mean, that seems to be our biggest problem.
Yeah, so voter turnout is a major issue. The evidence as to whether online voting actually impacts that is mixed. And I know some municipalities strongly disagree with the claim that it improves online voting. In particular, I've spoken to municipal managers who have said that, you know, in their experience, you could put an iPad in front of a young voter, and they still wouldn't vote. The disengagement is, sort of, transcends the mode. It's the message, not the medium, that's, I guess, the issue. In terms of if there's a system that's foolproof, well, certainly not. But the nice thing about online, sorry, the nice thing about in-person paper voting is the physical world has this property that the digital world doesn't have, which is if you put a ballot into the box, it doesn't evaporate, it doesn't make copies of itself in the box. And in principle, somebody can sit there all day and watch it. The candidate's representatives are watching it. I've been to DRO at the federal and provincial levels. So, you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of eyes watching physical paper boxes. And getting the same properties in the digital world is considered to be one of the greatest open problems in cybersecurity, quite simply.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Next item before I go through the room here. We're finished, the council? All right. Counselor Montero, please.
Motion, Special Counsel meeting Tuesday, March 13, recommendation that be accepted. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nicholas Herrmann.
All right. Any comments, folks? Those in favor? Okay. Next one is Counselor Reed. It's the Striking Committee.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Wolf, the Striking Committee recommendation that the minutes of the Striking Committee meeting held Monday, March 26, 2018, be approved.
All right. Any comments? Those in favor? Okay, the recommendation's carried. Counselor Mann? I'm sorry. Counselor Leggett. My apologies, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Devine, that the Special Counsel meeting Monday, March 26, recommendation that the minutes of that meeting be approved.
Those in favor? Okay, it's carried. Counselor Mann?
Thank you, your worship. Motion moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Frank Montero. Other business supervised injection services review of the Canadian sites. The recommendation, recommendation that the region of Waterloo consult and engage with the city of Cambridge in developing criteria for the possible locations of a safe injection service site in the city of Cambridge prior to the identification of any site-specific option. And that any site under consideration shall be located outside the Galt city center core area as defined by the 2012 Cambridge Official Plan Map 3 attached.
All right. Comments, folks? Counselor Motta?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I just want to make a friendly amendment that we put all three cores. And I don't see it going to Blair, but if you want to put that down, too, you can.
Well, what would you like?
Hesper, Preston, and Blair as well. I guess all the core areas of Cambridge.
All right, and you want the official, you want the maps that go with them, right? That would define the areas?
That would be correct.
All right, so we'll include that. Okay?
Thank you.
Any further comments? Counselor Montero?
All's been said yesterday, and if you look at the maps, the heat maps, it doesn't affect the other cores. Let's not plant the seed in somewhere that's not there. We know our city. We know, all of us live here. We drive around, and we see, we know where the problem is. So by bringing into play the other two cores, such as Preston and Hesper, let's not even go there, because there's no problem there. The problem is here. So, as I said yesterday, and the problem is here, our core, in my view, and what I've witnessed by going to different places, and you all know what the places they are, they were, there's no point in repeating them, does not, we're too small in that we cannot sustain an SIS in our downtown core. And again, our downtown core is only 106 acres. In comparison of the places that we were at, there was, there's no core that we saw. But we saw a core that's probably more the size of the Kitchener Core, which is 253 acres. And by saying 250, I'm just picking these, this number is the Kitchener Core. But by looking at the size of Kitchener and knowing Kitchener, it's similar, I could compare it, to say, to Ottawa. Ottawa is very visible, what we witnessed, what we saw there. It's very visible. You can see it where you could not see it in other places, such as Montreal and Toronto. So what I'm asking you is to think about this. We are too small. Yes, we need an SIS. Yes, we do. But not in the core. And in example, let's use another city that we were at that experienced a similar thing, which is London. London put theirs in a core. It's on King Street. And it's been there, well, it's been there, only we were there two weeks ago. It's been open for three weeks, or a total of five weeks now, counting today as the, and they already made a decision. And from our discussions with the medical, with the doctor, the Board of Health, and the BIA, we talked to the BIA, they then...
I'm sorry? What's the point of order?
I would like the counsel to speak to the amendment, okay?
All right, you're being asked to speak to the amendment. It's procedurally correct, okay?
I'm against the amendment.
Okay. If I may, at this point, members of council, we want to come out of this evening as a united council on this particular issue. So let's be very careful here, okay? Let's not divide ourselves over what really is. I agree with Counselor Montero completely, okay? And I've spoken to Counselor Motta that, in fact, the hotspot is South Galt. If you add the amendment, it's innocuous. It really is, okay? It's not speaking to the issue that's been raised by public health. We can add the amendment, but let's come out of this as a unanimous council. That's all I'm asking. Don't split on this. Counselor Mann, please.
Thank you, your worship, and speaking to the amendment, and I want to make sure we're unanimous as well. And I agree that our downtown cores cannot sustain an SIS. None of our cores can, because we don't have the density to support it. But if you list Hesper and Preston as well, then what you do is you set the stage for the future, that it would not occur there. If the majority of council wants to just leave it the way it is, I'm fine with that. I could go either way on this.
Counselor Devine?
On the amendment, like Counselor Mann, I can go either way on it. It is very, very, very important that we all leave here tonight, each and every one of us, with a vote of nine to zero. We need to send a message to regional council. We need to send a message to the other cities in the province. We need to send a message to the people that are ravaged in this city with opioids. We also need to send that message to the provincial government and the federal government. Now, I'm asking, what I'm asking this council to do on the amendment, is to vote unanimously on the amendment. Because we don't need a split on the amendment, and then a split on the main motion. So like Counselor Mann had said, in the future, things could change. A year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, things could change. Now, clearly, the hotspot is in South Cambridge. That's pretty obvious to everybody. But we need to send a message to everybody in this community, the residents of this community, the people that are struggling in this community. That's the...
That's the message we need to send. Thank you.
Counselor Mata, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, through you, I've already stated that I'm personally opposed to safe injection sites. I still haven't been convinced it's the right way to go, but I was willing to set aside my own personal belief to come united, that we're to keep it out of the core area, and I just wanted to give the other cores that level of protection. I do hear the comments made around the table, that the Galt core is where the problem is, and that's where the focus is, I completely get that. But I wanted to give the other cores that level of protection as well, that's all I was coming from.
I don't, I just want to correct myself, in a sense, I'm not downplaying the other cores. All I'm saying is, in the health report, they're not looking at them. But again, I come back to, we got to come out of this united, folks, okay? And if the amendment's on the floor, I'm going to suggest to council, support the amendment, okay? Counselor Liggett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm glad you iterated that. When I, when I look at that chart, yes, the darkest of the red is in Galt, but there is also red in Preston, which concerns me, and there's also some red in Hesler, which concerns me.
Yellow.
No, there's red, right there.
Not Hesler.
What is that? Whatever it is. Don't throw my train of thought off. I think that we need, you know, none of our cores can sustain this here, and we just spoke earlier about the dams, and how important each dam was to each community, and I would say that the same thing is about our downtown cores. Every single one of them is tiny, every single one of them is, is a, a tiny town, it's not, they're, we're not, we're not a big, huge city here, we have separate little cores, and we will always have that. It's not like a big, huge downtown, like London or, or, or Hamilton. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm definitely going to support that amendment, and I hope that everybody else does here tonight as well.
Counselor Montero?
Your Worship, I'm having trouble, although I like us to be united. But I don't think there's a need. And furthermore, I, I agree that we all are trying to come with an answer for this crisis that we're going through, I understand that. But again, this final decision is going to be made by the region, although we're trying to get them to listen to us. But if we make too many obstacles, I'm afraid that, at the end of the day, we don't have a say at all, if we put too many obstacles. We know where the problem is, let's stick to our program, what, what it was. I, I'm having problems agreeing with the amendment, just because we have three cores. Yeah, the heat map shows all over the area, but if you look at the heat map of Waterloo, it's there too, and they're not getting one. You know, we know where the problem is, let's deal with this problem. If it becomes, if in the future, there is, it becomes a problem, then we'll deal with it again. But right now, stick to the, I cannot agree with you.
All right, Counselor Adche.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I, I could go either way on the amendment, but I think, as was pointed out earlier, I, I don't see a problem if we include the other two cores. I think the most important thing, as has been stated before, is that we are, we act together on this, that we're strong and united, like, it's, we're, we're just fighting over technicality, so I think it's really important that we show that we're united and strong, and we agree on this. Well, for that reason, I'm supporting the amendment, and I hope everyone will support that. We really need to be united on this, we need to show leadership, and if we don't, I, I think we're going to have a less chance to sway what could happen in the future, so let's stay united on this.
We'll, we'll have it, just, Counselor Liggett?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, you know, I hear Counselor Montero was, is saying, but I do think that we do need to be united on this, and, and we aren't going to get a second chance. I know he's saying that, you know, next time around, we, if, if it happens, that we can go through this again. I don't think that's going to happen. I think this is our one shot with the region, and we need to take advantage of it and stand united on this amendment.
Counselor Mann?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, you know, one of the things we learned when we went on this review of supervised injection sites across the, the province, was that there are victims or clients using facilities throughout the city. And one of the things that I, I compared it to in my own mind was, you could almost have, it goes back to the old phone booths, we used to have a phone booth on every corner so that people could use a phone when they didn't have a phone, and you could almost go to that point where supervised injection sites, if you had them in numerous places around the city, maybe that would be the better answer than to have just one. And so I, I think the, the region has come back and said, no, we just want one down in Cambridge at this particular time. That's, that's what they're proposing. I think if we, if we identify where we don't want them, then at least we tell them where we don't want them, and you can identify it as outside this, the Galt City core area, or, and outside the Hesler and, and Preston core areas as well. And I think that really sets the stage, so that whatever's coming down the, the track in the future, we're prepared for that, to some degree, not to have supervised injection sites in our core areas. And I, and I hear what Counselor Montero was saying, and, and we've been on the same page on just about everything when it comes to the supervised injection sites except for this, but I think it really sets the stage for the future. If something's coming down, then we've prepared it, and we don't have to go back to the region and say, we don't want it in Preston, and they'll say, what about Hesler? And we can say, we've already addressed that through one motion, rather than having to develop two or, two or more motions later on down the road. So I, I see the benefit of having it, I, I see, I, I really see the benefit and the, to have a, a united front, but we have to vote according to our conscience, and, and I think to, I think to list the two now is far better than to try and bring them in later on down the road.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote in a second, I'm going to say one more comment. When we had the cannabis decision, and we were, in fact, brought into the loop with regards to where we didn't want it, we said the three core areas, if I remember correctly, okay? We wanted it on Highway 24, and that's what we said. And I think we have to keep the same track here. It's a poll vote, so we're going to call it now on the amendment. The amendment is Hesler, Preston? Okay? Okay, let's go. All right, on the main motion, please. It'll be a poll vote?
I thought we're, we're voting on the amendment?
No.
Okay, no, no, I'll, I'll, through the chair. With the, the, with the amendment passing, the, the motion itself carries.
I'm sorry, you know, my apologies, absolutely correct, I was thinking in the, in the opposite. It confused me, Counselor Montero, okay? Okay. All right, let's move on. All right, please. That was a confirmatory? Counselor Wolf, is that confirmatory? All right, Wolf, please, the confirmatory bylaw. You have to turn her on, because I can't get into the screen.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Reed, confirmatory bylaw, as printed.
Those in favor? Thank you, and who's got the? Shannon, okay, Counselor Adche, opposed to the meeting?
Thanks, Your Worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mann, that the council meeting does now adjourn at 10 o'clock.
Oh, it is, okay. One more, thank you.
We must be going, oh, I was looking for it for Donna and Shannon, I'm really disappointed, yeah. Thanks, Donna.